We'll call Tuesday's May 26th County Board into session. Rise for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Wait.
We say, roll call. Nobody ever calls your name. How can that be? Did you just trip in? We have eighteen present and three absent. So, presentation of the agenda.
So move.
Motion Chuck Brand seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Resolution 2015-39, appointment to fill the vacancy of District Five.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Don City. I have chosen Paul Cock as a person to replace Tim O'Connor. We had three people apply. They were all good people, but I had to make a decision from one to another, so I chose Paul Cock. David Lino and I interviewed them, all three people, for fifteen, twenty minutes one day, and we came to the conclusion that Paul would be the person. David, you got any questions on how we did it? If not, go to your voter board and vote. Quicker than you think.
All right.
He's working on it. Kenny.
I did vote.
You'll vote twice.
That is passed on a vote of eighteen yes with three absent.
Now we'll ask Paul to come forward, and Jill will administer the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Paul Cock.
Who have been appointed to the Office of County Board Supervisor, District Five.
Who have been appointed to County Board Supervisor, District Five.
In and for the county of Door.
In and for the county of Door.
In said county.
In said county.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered into the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear or affirm, I swear, to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All done?
All done.
Very good. Thank you.
Get to be in the front row.
That was easy. Next to the correspondence in your packet is the unassigned fund balance. Is there any other correspondence?
Not that I'm aware of.
Does anybody got any questions on it? If you do, you can ask David Lino, he can tell you what it's all about. If not, public comment? Anybody from the public want to comment? Come forward, yeah, right by the mic and tell us who you are.
As if you don't know. I'm Beverly Woodyer. I'm a basic life support instructor for NWTC, and I would like to thank the county of Door and the Board of Door County Board of Supervisors for offering CPR training to all the interested employees. This year, we had forty-three employees take advantage of this life-saving training. We all know how busy our day-to-day lives are, and I would like to commend these employees for taking the extra time out of their busy schedules to keep up their CPR certification. Out of the forty-three, we had six newly trained people. I'm proud to have had the chance to work with these dedicated people, and hopefully they will never have to use their new life-saving skills. So once again, I thank you all for supporting the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? If not, is there anybody that wants to... Supervisors' response? Moving on, Administrator's monthly report.
There will be none this month.
Okay. Minutes of April 21st, 2015 meeting. Motion by Biz.
Motion.
Seconded by John Cook. Has anybody got any additions, subtractions, or corrections?
It's already been corrected.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Pending business, the county administrator recruiting update. I don't know if Kelly here or not. Anyway, what, we've boiled it down to two candidates. We're going to interview June 1st of the two candidates. And I think that's... You got anything else to add to that?
No, that's the summons options.
We're going to interview him for the second time on June 1st. The time isn't set exactly yet, but has anybody got any questions? Human Services Center update. Who wants to report on that? Leo, you're on that committee.
I wasn't at the last meeting. I'm sorry, but David was there.
Okay, David can bring us up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last core group meeting, the, some of the architect cost estimates were put in place, and there was some refinement of some of the plans on the center. Currently, I'll say this, I don't want to shock anybody, but currently, the estimate is about $6.4 million. Obviously, it's got to go to property, and there'll be potentially some adjustments made, depending on what property chooses to do, but it is moving forward. It's going to the Property Committee, I believe, on the... May 12th. The presentation will be in front of the Property Committee.
June 12th.
Sorry, June 12th.
Might be better May 12th next year. Has anybody got any questions on it? Where is, where is that right now? Go ahead, Ken.
We passed a resolution to do it for four million. It came in at 6:5. Does that mean we should just, can we just take a vote now to cancel it? Or when do we cancel it, since it's so far over budget?
I think you've got to give the Property Committee, Property Committee time to readjust that figure.
Now, I'm going to be serious. I want to know, since we passed a resolution for four million, will they strive to come within that, or are they going to just look at where they can come up with two and a half more million dollars?
I think what the, the answer to that is you're going to be appointed later on today as the Property Committee, and we'll let the Property Committee figure that out.
Oh, I don't want to get dumped on for it. I want to be, I'll blame somebody else.
His last opportunity.
All right.
So it's your problem, not mine.
I see.
True to form.
Is there any other questions? If not, we'll go to the resolutions. Resolution in memory of Art Miller. Leo, would you like to make the motion and read it?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-36.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David Lino. Go ahead, Leo.
Art Miller passed away on April 30, 2015, and he had been duly elected to the Door County Board of Supervisors in April 1980, re-elected '82, '84, and '86. He served through March of '87 for a total of seven years. And Supervisor Miller represented Supervisory District Five, including the town of Sebastopol, Wards 1, 2, 5, and 7. Following redistricting, he represented District 12, including the town of Sebastopol, Wards 1 and 2. He served on several committees, including Ag and Education, Extension Education, Soil and Water, Solid Waste Management Board, Door County Chamber of Commerce, had been elected to the Highway Committee, also appointed to the Resource Plan Committee. He also served as Chairman of Law Enforcement, Data Processing Committee, and Animal Welfare Committee. It's interesting to note, as you went through all these, that a lot of these committees no longer exist, leading to the fact that this happened a long time ago. Anyway, the, to the Door County Board, assemble in regular session this 26th day of May. Extend our sincere sympathy to Art Miller's family with this acknowledgement of his dedication to the citizens of the county of Door. I happen to know Art a little bit on a one-on-one basis. He also served as the Town Chairman for the town of Sebastopol from 1979 through 1986.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed unanimously. Recognizing Tim O'Connor, I was going to have John Cook. Would you make the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion regarding Resolution Number 2015-37.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second back again. Go ahead, John.
To the Door County Board of Supervisors, whereas Tim O'Connor was duly elected to the Door County Board of Supervisors in April 2012 and re-elected in April of 2014, and whereas Supervisor O'Connor represented Supervisory District Number Five, encompassing the town of Nassawapi, Wards 1, and the town of Gardner, Ward 2, and whereas Supervisor O'Connor served on several committees, including Airport and Parks, Community Programs Board, Emergency Services, Law Enforcement, and Property Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Board of Supervisors, assembled this 26th day of May 2015, extends to Tim O'Connor our sincere thanks and appreciation for his service to the people of Door County, and wish him the best upon his retirement from the county board.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed unanimously. Next item is the appointment of the Finance Director.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David Lino. Motion by Biz. This is Mark Janiak. He was, what would be the Assistant Finance Person?
Deputy.
He was assistant, and we chose him between Finance Director. David, you want to just expand on how that all, other than interviewed and...
Well, through Human Resources and with the Administrator, we did the process of casting our net across the state and the United States for a Finance Director. We had a first round of interviews from a number of people, decided that we wanted to look further. After that first round of interviews, Mark decided to throw his hat into the ring, which we appreciated, and he rose to the top, and we chose, Grant chose him as the Administrator to fill the position, and we're all very happy that he agreed to take the position, and we wish he had done it earlier.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no on that. By the way, I made one mistake, is that the China report is going to come at 10:15 instead of 9:10. So what we'll do is we'll go as far as we can through the, and take a break, and then come back in the session at 10:15 for the report on China. That's the plan. That is passed on a motion of nineteen yes, two absent. We're gaining.
Is that called a slow boat to China?
Yes.
You have to be a certain age to get that joke.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Next item is secure the state funding to support communicable disease control for population and health. Go ahead, Susan.
Yes, I would, I move that we approve this resolution. Do we need a second before I comment on it?
Coming on, seconded by Kathy. Go ahead.
Okay, this comes from Legislative Committee. Rhonda brought this to us earlier in the year, but we didn't do anything about it earlier because we were working on things that were actually in the governor's budget that we had concerns about. We did discuss this, however, with Representative Kitchens when he met with us, and what is being asked for is that some monies be set aside for local health departments to do a job that they're mandated to do but have never, ever been reimbursed, or at least not in recent years, for. And I was happy to look back and see that Rhonda is sitting there, so she will be able to talk about it. But one of the reasons we're bringing this up now, even though the budget isn't finished, is if we pass this today, if we support it and feel it's valid and has merit, then it's early enough in the year for us to forward it to WCA for consideration as part of their legislative agenda. Those resolutions have to begin by a certain date in June. So we're hoping that we'll support this, that they will take it up as part of their agenda to support it.
Does Rhonda, you want to say something, or...
This is a resolution that is being targeted to all the different counties in the whole state, from the Wisconsin Public Health Association and the Wisconsin Association of Local Boards of Health. And as you can see in your packet, in 2011, we did a similar resolution. This one actually is looking at a specific amount of funding to increase the per capita rate that public health departments get from the state from around $13 to add $1 per capita. And then this funding would provide, like, a base amount for each county, and then based on your population, you would get some more. Wisconsin is rates very low on state support funding for public health. I also looked at some other statistics, and when you look at health rankings, they've done health rankings for all the different states, and from 1990 to now, we used to get, we were ranked as seventh best, now we're ranked at number 23. One of the things, too, this is looking at communicable disease funding to have a specific target for the money, because we've all had so many different communicable diseases that are emerging, such as Ebola, pertussis. In the health rankings information, in Wisconsin, we've had 120 new cases of pertussis per 100,000 population, and the United States has had, as an average, 15. We rank 50th. We rank very bottom on the number of pertussis cases that we have in Wisconsin. So that's an indication of the need for this stable funding for public health from the state.
Okay, has anybody got any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Carry forward for the general fund account, the remotion and...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2015-41, which is 2014 carried forwards for various general fund accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chuck Brand. Go ahead.
Every year, as you're aware, we have different projects, contracts, or grants that are funded in one year but are often not completed to a following year, and this is a list of those items that need to be carried forward so they can in fact be completed during this year yet. It's something that we end up doing every year. About this time after the audit's complete, there is an attached list as to what those contracts, awards, or projects are that are attached to this.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, go to the voter board and hold on. Sorry. By the way, Barbara's here to make sure, because she's going to be the person in charge next month, so...
I really thought Jill probably needed some help.
She's still not keeping up.
Still not.
Hold on.
I didn't hear that.
That is passed on a vote of nineteen yes, two absent.
Thanks for waking me up.
Next item is Human Services Resource Center Transfer of Fund from Parks Land Reserve. David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2015-42.
Is there a second?
Transfer of fund from Parks and Land Reserve.
Seconded by Kathy Schultz. Go ahead.
What this is, if you recall back in 2013, the Finance Committee generally quarterly or so reviews our unassigned fund balance and looks at projects or things that may be coming up in future years based on the CIP program or other input we receive from other committees. Two years ago, we took $400,000 and put it into a reserve fund with the concurrence of the board for a potential purchase of a piece of property near the Fair Park. It appears that that purchase is no longer going to be necessary or no longer going to be done. So the Finance Committee is recommending we take that $400,000 from that reserve and put it into the Human Services Center Fund, where there currently is about $600,000. This would bring it up to about $1 million towards the $2 million that we have pledged towards the project.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Ken.
On this one, Resolution 42, line, well, 11 and 12, the $400,000 for a specific property land acquisition will not be needed. Okay? Now, I understand transferring and all that, but I just want an explanation. I thought I'd ask it now. If it will not be needed, why are we putting $400,000 on the next resolution back into that same numbered account? Why not just, if it's there, why don't we just leave it there?
I think it's got to be earmarked specifically for something.
Is it just an accounting process, or what? Because it's the same number. It's, unless I read the number wrong, it comes out of 32138, and the next resolution...
It's a different number. It's a different...
Isn't it three? No, it's 32138, $400,000. It's 132138.
Those subsequent resolutions and our backup information...
That was backup information.
That is the resolution that was already adopted previously, and it's provided for backup information to 201542.
2013.
Oh, 13, that's why I missed it. Okay, okay.
But it is the same number.
It is the same number. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Other than that case, I have no problem.
Any other questions? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no. That is passed on a vote of nineteen yes and two absent. Next item is a power and resolution provided for a state approximating $9.8 million general obligation refunding bond series 2015A. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, we approve Resolution 2015-43.
Is there a second? Seconded by Susan. Is Mark? I see who's going to give a report. Mark, come on up. You've got to get on hot seat right away.
I'll start off.
You can tell everybody you started off by spending $10 million.
Good morning. The provisions of our existing bond issue allow us to refinance the existing balance beginning, it's a window that opens in September of 2015, and then remains open throughout the remainder of the bond issue. We have the opportunity at this point in time, because interest rates have fallen from the rates that are currently in place, to enjoy a significant savings by refinancing right now and enjoying the lower market rates that are in place today. We have this morning, Mr. Todd Taves from Ellers and Associates, who has come to make a presentation on what the mechanics and what the specific savings would be if we choose to do this refinancing. Todd Taves is a senior municipal advisor for Ellers and Associates, one of the principal owners. He had made this presentation to our Finance Committee last week, and so he's been gracious enough to join us again today to make a presentation to the entire County Board. Todd?
Thank you, Mark. Prior to the meeting, I had provided a hard copy of a handout, if you could locate that. And what I'd like you to do is find page seven, which is an exhibit of numbers. There's other supporting schedules and narrative within this report that we looked at with the Finance Committee, but really, the key to this is on page seven. So, as Mark had mentioned, we're entering the window now where these bonds can be refinanced. Originally, this debt was issued in 2002 for purposes of funding the Justice Center and several other projects. It was subsequently refinanced in 2005 using what was called an advanced refunding technique. In other words, it was refinanced before its call date. The IRS only allows you to do that one time during the life of tax-exempt bonds, so while these bonds have been carrying a fairly high rate for a long time, you haven't been able to do anything with them until now. Now, that existing debt, we show on the left-hand side of the schedule. You've got payments, you'll be making your 2015 payment on September 1st, then you have six additional payments running through 2021, with debt service at about $2.25 million per year. On the left-hand, or on the right-hand side, we show what we're proposing to do. The first thing I would mention is, we would actually be leaving the 2016 maturity intact, and the reason we do that is there's a concept called bank qualification. If you issue $10 million or less in the calendar year, you actually will get better interest rates. And if we do that, and we look at the very far right-hand side, the estimated savings would be about $1.2 million. The actual rates would be determined by competitive bid taken on June 22nd for award at your June 23rd meeting. Now, one other thing I would mention that goes along with this is, this type of debt can be placed on top of your levy limit. So as a result of the refunding, you would be able to basically claim this as an addition to your levy limit going forward and use that additional capacity to raise your levy. So any questions that I could answer?
Doesn't look like there's any.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you were left, if you left the payments the same and took that extra money against the principal, couldn't you pay it off faster?
If you wanted to continue levying the same amount...
Yes.
You could pay it off somewhat faster. So this would be done for debt service savings, where you would realize a level savings over the remaining life of the bonds. But you could shorten the term, yes.
Leo, back there.
You're showing the existing rate at four. And at five prior to 2021, your anticipated or estimated rate is down to .65, .95.
Right.
Are those estimates or estimates?
Those are based on an actual sale that occurred in April, and we've added one quarter of 1% to those rates, and that's currently a little bit below where the market, or actually a little higher than where the market is right now. So in other words, if we were selling this today, we would expect to do a little bit better than what we're showing here. But again, actual rates will be determined by competitive bid on the day of sale.
And that'll be due on June 28th?
We would take the bids on June 22nd, because you meet in the morning, and then we would present them to you on the 23rd at your morning meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Joe.
The key thing here is this is not being extended in term-wise, right?
Right, it's an apples-to-apples, so it would be done over the same term, and again, for level savings. We're not either accelerating or decelerating the principal repayment.
Anything else? David?
Are there penalties for early paying?
Yes, there would be. So just as you could not pre- Yes, there would be. So just as you could not prepay or refinance this debt until this point in time, you would not have the ability to then further prepay. Once you issue these, it would be locked in for that remaining six years of life.
Anything else?
Does the penalty start before we refinance or after?
After.
So we could pay off the principal sooner with no penalty?
Well, if you had cash to apply to the transaction, you could use that to reduce the amount of refinancing bonds issued. The other alternative, which I think is what you are getting at, is you would basically, instead of taking $200,000 in savings each year, you would pay roughly $200,000 more in principal each year, which would shorten up the term by about six months. Because your principal payments are around $2 million and that extra $200,000 a year, which would be the equivalent of the savings each year, would be about $1.2 million. So, you know, it would roughly cause the debt to mature about six months earlier. So not a bit, you know, wouldn't accelerate it significantly.
Thank you.
Susan.
Could you talk a little more about what can be done with the savings?
So the savings is going to leave a $200,000 difference in your budget compared to what you have now. So all other things being equal, you've got that now available to spend on other purposes.
Operating expenses?
Whatever you would choose. And then above and beyond that, you can choose to add up to the full amount of the new debt service payment on top of the levy as well if you wanted to. And again, that could be used for whatever purpose you would so choose.
Senior Resource Center.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Very good. Mark, you got anything to add? No, huh? We'll go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no.
Don't expect Ken Fisher to approve that.
There you go. That has passed on a nineteen yes and two absent. Next is the committee appointments with Tim O'Connor retiring or quitting. I made some committee appointments and Grant has made some also. Could I have a motion to, motion by Don City, seconded by Randy Alstead. Anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board and vote on that one. That has passed on nineteen to two absent. Next is the exception of donation invasive species education. Ken Fisher, you got a chance to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why is that?
Make a motion first.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 201545, Acceptance of Donation for Invasive Species Education and/or Control.
Is there a second? Seconded by, go ahead and explain it.
Okay, this is a donation for $1,400 from the town of Gibraltar to provide, as it says on line 18, provide control for invasive fragmites.
Does anybody have any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That has passed. Next one's yours, Ken, again.
Same, same thing. This comes from the USDA Forest Service, Northeastern Area State and Private Forestry for $28,000. It is also to help fight the invasive species.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not make that. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 201546. Or a second business motion. Sorry, Ken.
Does anybody have any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That has passed. Now, approval of fire root agreement and maintenance agreement with Brown County. David, do you like to make a motion and explain this?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-47.
Second.
Seconded by Joel Gunn. Go ahead.
Tim is back there. I'd appreciate it if Tim would come up and give a brief description of it.
Tim, you coming up here?
Never say brief because you don't.
Yeah, briefly.
That's the wrong guy.
He has two minutes.
I have a question on the last resolution. Is that money on the invasive species for anybody, Ken, or only for Gibraltar?
No, no. The $1,400 came from Gibraltar.
I know, but the $28,000.
The $20, oh.
The town of Sebastopol has been real active. We could use more money.
Yeah, I'm.
Bill Schuster. You'll answer that question.
Bill could answer that. It doesn't say in Resolution 201545, the one from Gibraltar, it doesn't specify, or am I not finding it here, that it's specifically for Gibraltar? It's just for countywide.
We've received donations from several of the townships, including Sebastopol, and we put it into pool, but they all received more service than what their donation is.
But in answer, Mr. Chairman of Sebastopol, I think Gibraltar would be a tad upset if we used every penny of that $1,400 solely for Sebastopol.
No, you can use their $1,400.
Okay.
Like you just half of it for Bailey's Harbor in that case.
We got to give first before you can receive.
Moving on, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Tim. You want to explain all three of them at once or are they all different or?
Well, they're all combined together for the most part. The indefeasable right to use is basically a 20-plus-year agreement that as we build the fiber with EnSite from Southern Door to the tip of Door County, it basically is outlining the fact that EnSite will give us six strands of fiber in their backbone design. And then off of that, we'll have laterals at Andres, Mill, Russell's Hill, Sunny Slope, Fish Creek, Jacksonport, Bailey's Harbor, EMS Sister Bay and Ellison Bay. We've also added into that the two school districts of Sebastopol and Southern Door and that's what the other two agreements are for. Those are memorandum of understandings between the county and those two school districts to join into that same fiber network. So this is a part of the legalese, if you will, that goes with what we approved to build this fiber from Southern Door to Northern Door. That's as short as it can be. Do you want me to get into the details?
David, you want to get into details or not?
I understand it sort of.
I'm assuming this was put together by our court counsel?
Yes.
Both the fiber route agreement and maintenance agreement that are attached to Resolution Number 201547 are the product of negotiation between myself and the attorney for EnSite. And it's about as simple as you can make one of these agreements. Tim accurately set forth, I think, the macro 25,000-foot explanation. And what we get with the fiber route agreement are six strands of fiber in the main backbone and the laterals with 96 strands of fiber in them each constructed. The next resolution, 201548 and 201549, I'm going to ask that you postpone. But the agreements between the county and the school district are driven by the agreement between the county and EnSite. Basically, we are facilitating this for the simple reason that EnSite only wants to deal with one public entity in Door County. So if anybody has any questions regarding the fiber route agreement or maintenance agreement, I'll be happy to answer those, but they were provided to you not precisely with the package but late on Friday, May 22nd, which is when we had the final version ready to go.
Go ahead, Leo.
Is this available to the town of Sebastopol, seeing that you're right in front of our building?
It will be. It will be a matter of negotiating with the county and I guess through the county with EnSite as to what the cost might be to make that connection.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Did he say we were postponing something?
I guess that's coming in the next two items. We're working on 201547 right now. Well, I'll go to the Voter Board and vote yes or no on this one.
I think David did. Did you make the motion to?
Ms.
Had to push it twice again.
That has passed on nineteen yes and two absent. Are you recommending the next two be postponed?
Correct. Actually, I have no choice. The school districts, Tim appeared, I think, on Thursday. It's Sebastopol School District. The Southern Door School District is taking the matter up on June 8th and I think Sebastopol again.
On June 4th.
June 4th and we will have those, the resolution and the actual agreements for the June 23rd meeting. This came up relatively quickly. I think we got the information about three weeks ago.
Yeah. I think that they're pretty much, at least at Sebastopol School Board, they were on board with it and ready to go with it. And EnSite is driving to have the school districts on board because we're ready to start construction with the sites in the south in June, so.
And understand, there's not a lot of negotiation. Door County is facilitating this through EnSite and the agreements that were approved by adoption of Resolution Number 201547 will simply be offered to the school districts for their laterals. We're just not going to negotiate anything because we aren't in a position to negotiate. But that being said, I think the school districts realize that this is a good deal for everybody.
Okay, so make the motion to, do them together or you can do them together?
I'd make a motion to postpone both Resolution 2015-48 and 2015-49.
Seconded.
Seconded by Don City. Has anybody got any questions? If not.
That's why things are quicker, computers.
Okay, go to the Voter. Now we're ready. Go ahead. Those two. That has passed on a vote of nineteen yes and two absent. Next item is a report on Sebastopol zoning, Lobenstein. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept the report on the amendment to the zoning map of Sebastopol for Lobenstein.
Is there a second? Seconded by Susan. Are you going to explain it or?
Well, it's pretty simple. Lines 14 to 16, I'll just read it. Steve Lobenstein is requesting to rezone this area, the one we're talking about, to commercial center in order to establish a professional office within an existing building which currently houses a trade and contractor establishment. The professional office is allowed by regular zoning permit in the commercial center or CC zoning district. If you go to page 54 on your Zoom, it shows the area that we are discussing. It's the one that has the building contractor located across from, what is it? Mama?
Grandma Tommy's.
Grandma Tommy's.
Does anybody have any questions? Vote on, voice vote on the report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Anyone want to make a motion for the ordinance?
Now I'll make a motion to approve the mandatory zoning ordinance 2015-05 concerning this property.
I'll second your vote.
Okay. Does anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the Voter Board. This has passed on nineteen yes and two absent. Susan, you want to, since you were the chairman of the EMS Committee, do you want to, go ahead, Leo.
Steve wanted to be here this morning to say something and I told him that this was quite an educated board. There'd be no reason for us to deny.
Do you want to take a break or do you want to do the EMS report and then take a break?
Keep going.
Why don't we do EMS?
Okay, we'll go to, jump down to the ad hoc EMS Study Committee Final Report. Who's going to, okay, Dan?
I'm going to make a couple of comments, but then Dan, who I hope is in the back, will come up and present to the board. The ad hoc committee was, it was a very interesting experience. I have to credit Dan Austin and maybe Dan Williams, whoever decided who would be on it, made sure that there were members of the County Board that were from different areas of the county. And I think when we went into it, we probably had some pretty diverse opinions as to where this would go. We had meetings that were extremely well attended by the public. We, always a full house, lots of public participation in terms of comments and questions, also by email and by mail. And those many, many questions were directed to the staff who spent a lot of time collecting a lot of information for us, preparing a lot of maps. And as we reviewed it, and by the way, I need to say, if you, if you want to see any of that, Lori Holtz was our clerk. She did a wonderful job of compiling comprehensive minutes that include all of this information that's on the website in the EMS department's link. And so you can see that if you have questions. But as we reviewed it, it seemed like, at least to me, like we slowly kind of all came to a consensus. As you'll see in our motions, our recommendations were all unanimous. So we have presented, or Dan has presented to the EMS Board and they have forwarded it to County Board to learn about and to see what they think as the next step. So.
We talked about this previously before Dan talks. You want to make a motion now to eventually pass it on or you'll wait till after the report?
Well, if, I mean, Dan is going to present some information, but I can make a motion that after this is all the discussion, that it gets forwarded on to property and, you know, accepted by the County Board and forwarded to property.
Okay, is there?
I'll second.
Seconded by, go ahead, Dan. Come on up.
You got to 11 o'clock.
So I'm your time killer? Good morning, everybody. The report is on your Zooms, but sometimes it's easier to follow by the bouncing ball papers. So I did make copies for everybody to follow along with. The, the idea of the report was that when the committee finished its work, the ad hoc billing committee finished its work, they made several motions to move forward. And once we started to think about how would that message actually be sent forward, it seemed appropriate that we would establish a report from the committee that would, you know, pull everything together, look at some of the examples that were looked at and made during the. look at some of the examples that were looked at and made during the content of the meetings that took place. And so that's, that's why we have resulted in having the report that's before you. We looked at many, many things, as Susan said. We looked at locations. We looked at call volumes. We looked at coverage maps. We looked at all kinds of things to, to look at what's good for today as well as what's good for 15, 20 years from today. With, with the numbers that have changed as rapidly as they have in the, in our EMS response world, we didn't think that we could accurately project much beyond 15 years as far as where certain things might, might wind up locating. We addressed several of the concerns. One of the examples that's in the latter part of the report that addresses, the question that, one of the questions that came up several times was the, is Door County getting a good deal now with the way we run the service? We addressed that, I think, very thoroughly and put some examples in there for people to kind of, you know, draw your own conclusion. The model that we have in Door County, which is a county-based model, which allows for the coverage service that we have right now, is different than what is done in all but one other county in the state, where individual townships provide the EMS service. In those models, you may have as many as 30 ambulances in a county because every town has two ambulances in their garage, or every village, or every, at least two ambulances, because nobody will ever have one. They all feel like if I have one and we're out of business, you know, we are, we're out of service, now we need another one. So the examples that are in the model would, would be to show you if Door County's model was the same as the typical state model, as well as pretty much the national model, what it would cost, and then what it costs for the model that we have here. So it shows, I think, I don't know, I can give you the exact number here. We save with our current model about $2.7 million as opposed to what a typical county model would look like. So I think that would tell you that, yeah, we, we do get a fairly good deal in Door County. The other thing that we looked at extensively was the locations. And locations, as we, as the committee determined and as our EMS committee determined, need to be dealt with from a time, or from a standpoint of where are, where are the call volume, where's the call volume at? How many calls do we have in a specific area? And then what's the response to those calls as far as time goes? So what we did was took a, again, sort of a national average type circle, if you will, and we looked at 10-mile response zones. That's what those circles are on the maps in the back part, and I'll talk more specifically about those as we get further down. So those are 10-mile response zones. It doesn't necessarily relate to 10 minutes, but in some cases it does because of the, if it's a straight shot on the highway, it's probably less than 10 minutes. So the 10-mile response zones seem to be appropriate. As we did that, the question came up about, we had already passed, you had already passed a resolution to support the bug fire resolution, which was to go along with them and build a joint building if their referendum passed. The first time that the referendum came up for vote, it did not pass. So we looked at it again and decided that because we wouldn't necessarily have to build anything down there or do anything down there prior to the next referendum timeframe, that it made no sense to really do anything other but to support that and stay with that resolution and just see where that winds up going from the voter's standpoint. So that recommendation was made to continue with that resolution and move forward from that. The other things that we looked at were, and that resolution said that, just to refresh you, that resolution said that essentially the key points would be, is that the county would support the, going in with that project if the station were built on Highway C between DK and 57. So anywhere along that road would be acceptable from the county's perspective. There was also a square footage amount put into the, into the resolution so that we could, instead of looking at money, because money will shift around a little bit now that it was postponed at least a year, the bids, I'm sure, will come in a little bit differently again. So we looked at what our square footage needs were, and then they would be basically times whatever the square footage cost will be for that particular project. So the, on the last, if the referendum had passed the last time, we would have been about $775,000 based on our square footage for that particular project. So we looked at, at other locations because the, the original hypothetical question that came in from our county board chair, which was if you had a clean slate and there were no politics involved, where would you put your ambulance stations? We had originally said that one would be at the YN. We would currently hold the Sturgeon Bay Station and somewhere mid Door, Carlesville area, and then we have a station in Sister Bay. So that was what we originally had said, and we were kind of working a little bit off of that model. When we started to look at it a little bit further, a couple of things happened. We, we have a full, we had added a crew last, last year, January 1st, to the Sturgeon Bay Station. It was determined that that crew would, and the, the present crew would always be in that house, so to speak. So we were allowed then to actually go further south with the, so YN location was no, was actually now too close to the city. It would really be better served, the southern part of the county, if it were a little bit further south. So we, again, started looking at maps and pasting circles on them and looking at all kinds of stuff, and we found that somewhere around the county shop would be an adequate location as well. So the question that will come up, I know for sure will, and it's been asked many times, is are we satisfied, if we, if the referendum were to pass, are we satisfied that we would be able to go in with the bug project and that would be a, a good location? And I've, I've said at many meetings that yes, it will be because it will have full-time staffing, which then eliminates the 10-minute delay that we currently have when we have volunteers. So even though we shipped that around five miles this way, four miles that way, it's not a significant issue because of the full-time staffing, the vehicle gets out the door immediately. So that, so whether it's at the county shop, or whether it's with the bug project, both of those locations will work. What we also found then is that as we were drawing our circles, we found that we had actually a significant hole in the mid Door area, where we have much more call volume than we do in the southern part of the county. So it was just identified that in the future, when, again, the hypothetical question came out, where would you want one, that that, somewhere in a triangle from basically, if you look at Egg Harbor to Carlesville over to Jacksonport, somewhere in that triangle would be a good location for a station from a response standpoint and from a call volume standpoint. People were concerned at, at one point or another about how would we add staff, how would we add buildings, how would we do those types of things? And the answer really comes down to staff gets added based on the call volume. A perfect example is this last year. We had too many calls in Sturgeon Bay. We couldn't handle them anymore, so we added staff. We would also look in the future, when would those stations be manned with full-time people, would be when the call volume exceeded the ability to manage the calls. And is that, and somebody says, well, what, when is that? And I said, well, it's whenever that happens. And it could happen two years. It could happen five years. It may never happen in some of the locations. So what we did is, is we tried to identify the best-served locations throughout the county from a response standpoint. And what we currently have is call volume and what we would anticipate as future call volume, those are still going to be the areas. So basically with those four locations, we, all but a few very minor spots in the county, we completely cover the county with those 10-mile response zones. So that was another piece of the puzzle that took us a while to figure out. And then finally, on the last, let's see. On the, on your Zoom, I'm not sure what it is, but on the 1, 2, 3, fourth page in, where the recommendations come, there were six motions that basically came out of the ad hoc committee that were forwarded on to the EMS committee, and the EMS committee has voted 100% unanimous approval of all these recommendations to move forward to county board and to the property committee. You know, I can read all of those if you'd like. Otherwise, they're, they're basically there as you can see them. If you want to ask questions about them, maybe that's the easiest way to take a look at it. It's the, it's the one where it just, it says, recommendation, there's a little box at the bottom that talks about Model 2. You see that on your paper? Or on your Zoom? The Model 2 recommendation recommends that somewhere in the future, we will have five units staffed out of four locations on the mainland. So that's two in Sturgeon Bay and one at the three other locations. That at some point in time, based again on call volume, need, response, whatever the case may be, that's where we will be someday. And again, the someday is an unknown. You know, there may come a point in time when building the buildings and, and starting with seasonal staffing like we do now. We have a seasonal unit that started last weekend in Sister Bay to start to deal with the, with the larger volumes of calls there. You might want to, you know, you could, building prices, I heard some favorable rates and things this morning. You might want to build those stations when the cost is in your, in your benefit, and then start to staff them as needed and, you know, put our, our seasonal staff in, in some of those locations. If, if you'd like, so that, that was the primary emphasis of the, of the initial report. And the, the one motion that, that is not in this report, that, that did come from the Emergency Services Committee was to move forward with the headquarters station or the Sturgeon Bay Station immediately. That, that was what we kind of started this project with. That was the initial need, and we just wanted to look at everything so that it could be looked at and not have to be looked at over and over and over. So we looked at everything and tried to make reasonable recommendations for the future, but we still have a need in Sturgeon Bay to build that station. And, and the only thing that remains, a mystery right now, is the, the exact location. I think we have the location. It's a matter of whether that property is purchased or leased. The property that's being discussed is the hospital property that's located on Michigan Street, east of the Surgery Center, across from the YMCA. It's, it's basically the hospital loans from the Surgery Center to the highway. We, we did take into consideration the rotary that's going to be going in there, or not the rotary, the roundabout. I don't like to call rotary, I'll say. It takes into consideration, we do have room there for a station to fit. We have preliminary drawings and cost estimates for, for that station. Preliminary drawing and the cost estimate is between $2 and $2.4 million to build a station that would last us well into the future. So that recommendation was to also come forward and be forwarded to the property committee to do the negotiations of whether it's going to be a lease or a purchase. Our committees, both of the committees felt as though that if you had a lease, similar to the one we have now, which is a 40-year lease, if we had like a 99-year lease with a 25-year out clause, that, well, one, we'd all be dead by then, so it wouldn't matter. But two, it was still a good deal for the county instead of purchasing land that, that who knows how much that might cost. That it's still that, you know, the, the hospital administration has told me that, that land is, is less valuable to them than the property that we currently reside on. That the hospital's moving in that direction, and they would, would, if, if we're going to do something, they would prefer that we would do something on a different piece of property. And because we're on their property now, they were willing to provide the same type of a situation in the future. So that was, I think, the emphasis of the report. John, I saw you had your hand up.
I was going to ask you to clarify for us. Dan, on that recommendation, as motion number two says a second 12 paramedic, 12 paramedics, two crews will always remain in the city of Sturgeon Bay. Can you help us justify why you chose to do that versus putting them out by the 4257 split?
Sure.
Dividing those two crews?
Sure. The reason why, when I was here last year asking for the sixth personnel that you granted, granted me so that we could, could provide better service, we did, we determined that the reason for that request was the call volume and the second calls and third calls that we were getting in the Sturgeon Bay, in the greater Sturgeon Bay area. So that was the justification for getting those personnel. When we, when we looked at that Highway 4257 split area, it was, it was, that was an area that was selected so that if we put a unit there, that they would be constantly coming back to handle those second and third calls from that location. So one, it would delay response time, and it would then leave nothing in the southern part of the county if that were the permanent location. So that was an issue that we all, I think, identified and said that, and to go along with that, we are now over 250 calls ahead of our call volume from last year to date. And so the calls don't appear to be changing much, and 80% of those are within the Sturgeon Bay area. So I think that the, we've demonstrated the need and, and the rationale for keeping those, that unit, or both of those units in Sturgeon Bay. We currently, when things are going on, that second unit in Sturgeon Bay does float one direction or the other to make sure that we keep the response balanced within the county. We have people, when it gets busy, we have people on the road in an ambulance floating one direction or another, probably five hours out of the day, to make sure that our response zones, we try to equalize our response zones. So instead of staying here and then having a 20-minute response zone, we float a little bit further north. Now we have, we split it and we have two 15-minute response zones. So we do that all day long already. We'll continue to do that to provide the best and most expedient service to wherever our next call is going to come in from, which we never, never know. Were there any other questions as part of the meat part of the report? And then we'll get to the maps in a second.
Yeah, I was kind of curious. I was reading through this report, and I'd like a better explanation of traditional town-established system.
Okay, a traditional town-established system is one where by law right now, the towns are responsible to provide ambulance service or contract with or let somebody else provide for. In this case, the county has provided for. The towns in that case. So if you look at the model, let's use Brown County. You know, there's a service in Howard. There's a service in Pulaski. There's a service in Eshwabenan. There's a service in DePere. There's a service in Ledgeview. There's a service in Bellevue. There's a service in, obviously, the city of Green Bay.
Physical equipment in those municipalities?
Yes.
But Ledgeview doesn't have any equipment.
Ledgeview has, the, the equipment that comes from there is split response from DePere and county rescue.
Correct. They don't have any.
They don't have any equipment there, right.
Yeah, so they don't provide any equipment.
No, they don't provide it. It's provided for them. Some other counties might actually be a better example. Marinette County, again, has virtually a service in every town with two ambulances. So the traditional model is for the town to provide it with volunteers or whoever they choose to, to staff it, and with, with, like I said, typically two ambulances at each location. Now, is every single township have that throughout the state? You know, I would say no, they don't. But the traditional model is that most of the services are run that way, where we have, we do, with multiple townships in the county, we do it with, with essentially three locations currently.
Physical locations?
Physical locations, yes.
Not located in each municipality?
No.
Because I did a brief search, and I found very few municipalities that actually house their own equipment.
Okay.
Ledgeview, I, I work in Ledgeview, and I know that they don't house any equipment. It costs them about $100,000 a year for their provided services. And that's over 7,000 people.
Okay.
It's split between the city of DePere and county, county rescue.
Mm-hmm.
Glenmore doesn't provide any services themselves. They contract. So I just had a hard time reading that and seeing those kind of numbers in this report.
Well, like I said, every township does not provide the service. Some of them do contract with, and per, per the state statute. The example is though they still pay for it individually as a town. They don't pay as much because they don't specifically have the vehicles there, but I can do some research as well and come up with, with counties that virtually every township does have an ambulance service with two, two vehicles with at least one station in a physical spot.
Go ahead, Ken. You can let go.
Okay. Okay.
But going along with what Dave said, you can't stand up before us and, and tell us you're going to look to see where it's the most expensive and use that as a cost basis for us to sell us this thing.
I'm not trying to sell you, I'm not trying to sell you anything.
What you said was you could look through the state and find where it's more expensive. That means you would use those numbers to skew your report. You just got done saying that.
Those were my exact words?
If Dave is correct in that it's cheaper done a different way, when you compare this, because I don't know, are, do all these When you compare this, because I don't know, are, do all these counties throughout the state, and you just said they don't, have full-time staff operating just like us? Did you project our costs to those counties?
There's one county.
Or did you, I know there's one other county that does it like us, but for the cost to the towns, did you project those costs to the towns in these other counties, the other 70 counties that do it by town? Did you really look at their cost for supplying the service? Or did you just project our cost into the towns? That if a county, if Abrams County has 18 towns or 14 towns or total, did you, did you just say, okay, that's so much times what it costs us, where they might be doing it a less expensive way? That's what I'm trying to get a grasp on, especially based on the items that Dave just brought up.
Okay. I did not look at any other township's cost. I took a look at the cost of personnel, the cost of ambulance vehicles in Door County, and assumed that if these were established in Door County, these are where, would be where ambulance stations would be, based on a level of pay that we currently pay our people and the cost of ambulances that are in today's marketplace. So I didn't compare to any other township, to any other county, because that wouldn't be fair, because there is no county exactly like ours, except for Washeira County. And even in Washeira County, they have some outside contracting that comes in and covers part of Washeira County. So it wasn't still a good match. So instead of trying to compare to somebody else, I took the numbers that you can pretty much get anywhere and took those numbers and said, if you had an ambulance here, 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 and here, that's what it would cost you. Now, you can sit and argue about whether we would really have an ambulance in certain places, and you can play the numbers game back and forth based on that, but it would be my opinion that all of the locations that I listed here would definitely have ambulances if the township was providing it in a location. So the actual dollar comparison, looking at a township, what they have or what they don't have, I didn't look at, I just looked at, this is the model that's used in many townships, and if that were the case here, here's the example.
And my dispute is not necessarily with the need for the services or who's providing the services. I'm looking at a report that the general public is going to see, and I'm going to see the words "traditional town established systems," and people are going to presume every municipality does this. And I went and looked at Bellevue, the Village of Bellevue, 2012, their actual was $100,000 for contracted services. Now, I had to make certain assumptions that there weren't on-call budgeted items and that stuff. 2013, actual was 92.5, 1485, 2014, 85, 2015, budgeted 77.5. Ledgview providing, asking for the same services. I'm just, again, based on the contracted value from the city to DePere was, went from 75,000 in 2013, I believe, to 2015 at 88. County rescue from 11.8 to 14,000. I mean, I did a basic search for a number of municipalities. Glenmore was, Glenmore was $12,000. So what I'm getting at, I'm looking at a report that to me is misrepresenting information about the traditional emergency services provided. I looked at a number of municipalities that are traditional, and these numbers don't match that.
I think, though, that this study was not meant to do what you're talking about. He just added that in for some information to give you a little picture on what it might cost the county. If you wanted a study like you're talking about.
And no municipalities would do it this way.
Maybe not, but it would cost 25, $30,000 to have a study. And the county has decided in the past few years to have a paramedic service versus an EMT service in some areas. And I think you could quickly brush the statistic of what paramedics, you know, the number of drugs that you've said a number of times. But the idea of the study was not to start comparing our services with everything else. That was just sort of an added addenda, just to give a little brief.
And I understand that.
And we can sit and argue that all you want.
This is not a valid addendum to that. It is not a traditional town established system. By the way, my four hours of search on the internet over the weekend showed.
But anyway, that's.
So that's, I have no problems with the way we do it. I have a problem with the set of information being presented, that's facts.
Okay. Any other questions? We should add you on the committee, I guess.
Huh?
We should add him on the committee.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
All I said, you know.
No, Dave's right. You can't make assumptions and put this on paper and then bring this to 21 of us, well, 19 of us, and use this as, here's why you base this, here's what you base your opinion on. You can't just make up numbers.
These numbers are not made up.
That's an economist's trick.
Well, that, that wasn't the purpose of this.
It's not right, Dan. It's just not right. Now, I'm not against the ambulance service.
We'll tear that page out then and not put it in there.
I'm just saying the way it's presented isn't correct.
That really has nothing to do with the study, so we can just tear that page out.
Those pages can be deleted from the report if they don't believe to be accurate. I would argue that they are accurate in many, many locations. It doesn't say that this is what happens in every single township. It said, here's what it costs in Door County, based on cost of vehicles, cost of personnel, and if you had them in those locations. That's it.
Running it your way. There could be other ways to do it. Other towns and counties do it a different way.
Then fine.
Is my point. I'm not arguing against the system we have. I'm just saying I don't like numbers being thrown at me, and they're manipulated, they're used to manipulate. They're used to manipulate, and that's not right. That's not giving us the fact we need to make a decision.
And I take offense to the fact that you're suggesting that my numbers are trying to manipulate you, because it is not true. The report says very specifically, like I said three times, the numbers are based on what an ambulance costs, what people cost in those locations. If you want to argue about the locations, fine, but that's what it costs if you did it in that type of system. All it was, was an example of that versus what we have now.
Are there any other?
Here, simple.
Are there any other questions? If not, there's a motion on the floor to pass it on to Property Committee?
Yep.
We got a second and everything on that?
Yes, Chuck, I think.
Yep.
We'll go to the board.
Read the motion back again, please.
Well, there was the, that's just.
Could you read the motion back again, please?
One second. By, while we're waiting, I'd like to thank the ad hoc committee. I'm going to try to name the names, but correct me if I don't get them all. It was Tim Hurlach, the Fire Chief of Sturgeon Bay. Kathy Schultz, Sturgeon Bay. John Cook from Southern Door. Who else? Randy Holston from Northern. Susan from Southern Door.
David Lino.
David Lino. And Doug Wyman, that's the one I'm trying to pull.
And Chris, Fire Chief in Sister Bay.
And Chris, the Fire Chief.
And Dr. Hurlach.
And Dr. Hurlach, although he was in Arizona for 99% of it, but he was in contact with So the, in my opinion, they did a good job. We can argue figures all day long.
I'm not disputing the quality of work that they did out of this, or the county's quality of work that our services are provided. I'm questioning the use of numbers that I know constituents are going to say, wow, it would have cost us that much money to do it otherwise.
Okay.
I have a problem with that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
I would like to comment on that traditional town established system that Dan came up with. It's an example of what it would cost per township if each township had their own ambulance service as required or as outlined by the state statutes and state law. Based upon our numbers in Door County of what we spend on a yearly basis, if that had to be divided for each town to run their own individual course of action, I believe Dan's figures are correct, and I think that's what he was trying to portray here. And if I'm wrong, Dan, tell me I'm wrong, please. And that's the way I understood it throughout the ad hoc committee purview as we looked at all these designs. We weren't necessarily trying to compare ourselves with other townships in general, because we can't rely on other townships. We all know we're a landlocked, best facility here. We have to rely on our own resources, not anybody else's unless they're coming over by vote. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else while we're waiting for the, okay, we're ready to vote on passing it on. Go ahead, read the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the motion was the.
I want to hear what it read now.
To accept the report and forward such on to the Property Committee.
Right. So everybody vote yes or vote no.
Do it again.
That is passed on a vote of 18 yes, one no, and two absent. We'll take a recess.
Very good.
And come back for China.
For how long?
Well, I want to thank all of you that are in the room, and hopefully we'll have a few more coming in, to give us a few minutes to tell you about our visit to China. We had eight members of our delegation. I'm going to introduce them in a second. And we spent four days in the city of Gindishin with our Chinese hosts. Greg and Marcia Meisner of Meisner Landscaping. Greg is doing the landscaping for the Door County Square project that he'll tell you about. Alyssa Bleckel, who's a reporter for the Door County Advocate, who will tell you of her experience as a traveling journalist. Kevin Grosskopf from Door County Memorial Hospital, Ministry Healthcare. He's the Chief Business Development Officer for the hospital. And in addition, my husband, Bob, who's in the back, and Phil Bebel, who is not here today. He's in Madison. He's the senior artist in the Office of Communications for the School of Engineering of the University of Wisconsin. I think I got it all. All right, so we had a wonderful.
And Mary Lopez.
And Mary Lopez, that's right, from the hospital, who's the Chief Information Officer, who is not here with us today. So we had a great time. We enjoyed ourselves. We don't, I don't think we committed or caused any international incidents, and more important, we got done, I think, the business that we had to do. And that's what I'm going to turn it over to the delegates to tell you about that business. We had three goals. One was to begin a relationship between the People's Number One Hospital and the Door County Memorial Hospital, and Kevin will tell you a bit about that. The second thing was to publicize the sister city relationship so that our community knew really what it was and what was going on. And Alyssa did a fine job with that. I hope you all read her articles and her blogs about what was going on while we were there. And the third thing was to take the next steps in the development of the Door County Square project, and Greg and Marcia will tell you about that. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Sure. Thanks, Suzy. We had heard over the last couple of years that the hospital in Gindishin were very interested in having some of the delegation from the local hospital here in Door County. So I think it was around March when Jerry Warwick, our CEO, asked members of our senior leadership team if anyone would be interested to travel to China and explore this relationship with the People's Hospital there. And Mary Lopez and I raised our hands, and we said we'd be really happy to go on this adventure, and we did. And it was a wonderful experience for us. It gave us a better and greater understanding of what it means to have a sister city and also what the Chinese medicine healthcare industry was like as compared to our own. So when we were there, we met with the CEO of their hospital, which, by the way, had 1,100 patients in their hospital. By comparison, we have maybe 20 to 25 inpatients in our hospital at any given time. But it was a wonderful meeting, and we discussed a little bit about the American healthcare system, a little bit more about our organization here in Door County. And we invited them to join us in July. So they'll be coming here in mid-July. I think all five members of the Chinese delegation are from the Number One People's Hospital in Gindishin. And we're very happy to kind of give them an overview of our healthcare system, give them a tour of our medical facilities, not only at the hospital, but also some of our clinics throughout Door County and Algoma, and our rehab facilities. And we're very interested and excited in exploring where this relationship with our counterparts in China will lead. I think that we have something to learn from Chinese traditional medicine. We have an integrative medicine physician on our staff, Dr. Chona Antonio from the Philippines. And she does acupuncture and acupressure and meditative yoga and those types of things. And what we've discovered is that a lot of our community members in Door County are very interested in integrative medicine and alternatives to medication and surgery, if it makes sense. So what we would like to do is maybe explore that relationship a little bit more, and they would also like to come here and learn more about Western medicine techniques from us. So I really hope, and we at Ministry Door County Medical Center, hope that we'll be able to continue this relationship and further our commitment to the Chinese medical delegation coming in July. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you. Alyssa?
Hello, I'm Alyssa Bleckel. I'm the newest addition to the Door County Advocate. I'm a news reporter, and I work alongside Samantha Hernandez. I'm sure you're very familiar with her work. I was asked to come along on this trip after I did a story about the October delegation that went in 2014. I wrote a story, and Bill Schuster enthusiastically invited me to come along, and I couldn't say no. And with the cooperation with my company, the Gannett Company, who owns the Door County Advocate and the Press Gazette, they were, our publisher was more than willing to foot some of that bill, because it's not cheap to go over there. But anyways, it was a great opportunity, I think, for a reporter. And I'm the first from Door County to go on like a government trip to report on it. It was very exciting, breaking records for us over at the Advocate. But I wrote a total of five official articles. The first one published on April 22nd, and it was a preview about what the delegation would be doing. And my role as a reporter was to observe and write and report. I had little to no interactions with doing official business. I literally followed these wonderful people around, listened to the questions they asked of their counterparts, and reported. It was a wonderful experience. I was nervous about being a reporter in China, because some are in prison for who knows what, but we were very lucky and very fortunate. Our hosts were very gracious and willing to work with me. Anyways, the second article appeared on April 25th, and it was a Q and A of each of the delegates, asking what their purpose was and stuff like that. They also published my first journal, and I wrote, throughout the nine days that I was traveling, I wrote a first-person point-of-view journal about travel and what we did and different, more interesting aspects of traveling abroad. On the 29th, it was like the first official article about the exchange, and that included information with Susan working with the government of Gindishin, and it was a very formal affair. Like, it was very important to them, and it was very important to us, too. And, I mean, we were very honored to be able to even go into a government building in China. And then that was also the first day we were at Taoshishuan, where the Door County Square is. Then the fourth article was on May 2nd. It was the mission accomplished article on the front page, and it talked about all of the perspectives of the Door County delegates as to what we accomplished and what we did and what they thought. And to sum that article up, they all think that this is a huge deal for Door County, and they want you all to know that, too. And that was the reason why I was there. And I was able to talk with a few of the Chinese people we were there with as well, and they really loved having us there. And, I mean, we were welcomed like we were old friends when we got there, and we were just like, oh, my God, we don't know you at all. But they wanted to exchange meals and phone numbers and, you know, whatever, to be friends with us by the time we left, you know, to continue our friendships. And the very last appearance in the, and these articles are all, excuse me, in the printed paper. And the very last one were little brief synopses of my journal entries. And all of these articles are still available online at DoorCountyAdvocate.com. If you wish to read them, I can put together a list of links if you would like that as well. We got a lot of online hits with all these different stories. All of our families, obviously, were reading each and every day. All of, pretty much everywhere I've gone since I've been here, oh, you're that China girl! So people. So, people are recognizing my work and the work that we did over in China. So, that's very good. A lot of people have emailed, phone called, you know, commented on our Facebook page and Twitter and all that about how they enjoyed reading the stories. And a number of people have, or thought it was interesting about the business relationship that we could, that Door County could potentially have in the Door County Square. We also had some readers in China, which was exciting because usually Door County Advocate stories do not make it to China. But our friends there wanted to read, so we sent them the links and they were able to do so. Even with their very, their limited access to American websites, they were still able to read the Advocate. So, that was good news. And my publisher and editor are very excited about the work that we, that I can be doing in July when the delegates come here to visit. We're going to get a lot more Door County people here. Wherever that the delegates go, we're going to get more exposure. Obviously, when we were in China, it was mostly about China. But when they come here, it's going to be about Door County. So, we're very excited to continue reporting on that. And if you all want to stop by the Advocate, I'd be more than willing to share more of my experiences with you. I'm there quite often, but you can always give me a call if I'm gone. So, any questions at this time? Yes, sir.
What is a typical Chinese phone number?
It starts with like eight-six and it's like thirteen numbers long.
Is it all regular numbers, like we happen?
Oh, yeah.
But it starts with eight-six, which...
That's their international country code. Like, we are number one. America is one. And they are eighty-six and then it's a very long string of numbers.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Any other questions? All right, then I'll pass it on to the Meisners.
Good morning. Yep. You have to be over here, here. Greg and Marcia Meisner. I would say that our involvement in this project started about a year ago. Bill Schuber asked myself if we would be willing to, as a business, design a part of a square that they're developing in Jingdezhen, China. And I said I would. So, we spent last fall and part of the late summer developing some plans for the, what we call the Door County Square. And I'll show you that. I have some slides and a video today. And so, we were, after the plans had been developed, we'd never seen the site. I believe that the board here has seen the plans that were presented by Tricia Crowell, probably last February or so. And they haven't changed too much. They changed the site plan a little bit. But since we had not seen the site at all, we were excited to go over there and visit and get an onsite feel for what was exactly going on over there. So, that was our involvement and our reason for going. I thought that our purpose was to develop more information on what they needed there, what the layout was going to be and how we could best develop the plans for that. So, we're in the process now of making a few changes. In addition to that, we didn't understand there was an opportunity for investment in this project in the form of a retail store. And we really didn't understand the investment process there much. So, we have a little information or better insight. Suzie made a point to talk to the people there. And so, they gave us some information on that. But today, I'd like to present a video that was developed by them for investment purposes primarily. It just gives you an overview of this project. It's called Taoshishan. I guess I call it a project, but I think they call it a Central Art Avenue is the theme behind this. It's a resurgence of the porcelain industry. This project was built in 1950. It went bankrupt. And I, and I believe that that was like an embarrassment for them because they were well-known, I mean, this goes back a couple thousand years. They were well-known for their porcelain and their china. And they had kind of lost that. So, they're now in the process of trying to rebuild that reputation on a worldwide basis. And so, part of this has to do with that. So, my wife is going to narrate this. It's a little difficult to read the bylines, even the English ones. So, we'll see how this works. Jill said all I had to do is push the button. Okay.
In AD 1405, Zenhays Fleet to the West opened up the Maritime Silk Road from China to the world. Ceramic, as one of the national gifts across the sea to the west, aroused the China craze. In Europe, King August II of Saxony once used six hundred heavily armed dragoons to exchange with neighboring countries for blue and white porcelain from the distant east, which became a topic. Since then, ceramic has become a symbol of China manufacturing, given a great name, China. Time flies and all memories returned, turned into a cloud of dust at the Wheel of History. Today, the glory reappears. Taoshishan China Workshop. Jingdezhen from birth remained connected with ceramics. Today, it has become the capital of porcelain in the world. Thousands of ceramic artists from home and abroad gather here. The output value of the ceramics industry rises year by year. The large number of tourists attracted by ceramic culture multiplies the urban economic vitality. Walking, walking in the streets of Jingdezhen, you can feel that whether the rich ceramic culture or pottery manufacturers from around the world are showing the enormous potential of the Jingdezhen ceramics industry. However, due to the single function and crowded environment, the traditional ceramics market has become increasingly unable to meet the needs of the development of the ceramic industry. Jingdezhen needs a platform driving breakthrough for the industry. Currently, this is what we lack badly, an advanced platform. No creation, no specification. What we are doing now to change. Taoshishan is used for creating a high-end platform instead of leaving it in an arbitrary development. But all the buildings, all the technology processes and also all masters, masterpieces, famous brands and sun, on arc included. Just to build such a platform, once in Jingdezhen, a must-to-visit. The project of Taoshishan, from the perspective of planning and design, should be the first class in the domestic. We can say that this project, just at present, should be a perfect combination with good opportunity, favorable geographical location and human resources. Taoshishan China Workshop, as the first rebuilt place in Jingdezhen, implementing the overall planning of rebuilding the old town with the concept of one-access, four-district, six-factories, occupies the economic center of eastern Jingdezhen. It is surrounded by the three-dimensional transportation network of bus, rail, passenger state and airport. Two ceramic professional colleges and three ceramic research institutions provide personal support for the project. And within 1.5 kilometers, large enterprises and residential areas have more than 100,000 consumers. Taoshishan Project is elaborately designed by a well-known design and planning team and overly operated by Oriental Merchant Real Estate Management Team. On the basis of the original old buildings of the Universal Porcelain Factory, they spent huge sums to rebuild, restore and settle. The culture line of porcelain river water and the soil forms a unique and creative street, which not only retains the shape of the old porcelain industrial buildings, but also integrates contemporary art elements and modern business concepts to establish the commercial platform containing cultural tourism, art exchanges, trade show exhibition expos, dining and entertainment and the hotel apartments. It has become an influential, comprehensive art commercial district. The Taoshishan Project is around the Central Fountain Plaza and is divided into three subject areas. The north-south axis is themed by Jingdezhen ceramics culture. The north is the Jingdezhen Industrial Heritage Museum, rebuilding Universal Porcelain Factory, clinkering workshop tracing the history and inheriting Jingdezhen intangible culture. The south is a museum of fine arts, the platform to develop an exhibition expo and promote trade exchange, enhancing the professional level and industry influence of the project. The east plaza is the traditional art sector, mainly engaged in civil fine ceramics in Jingdezhen, showing Jingdezhen traditional craftsmanship. Seventy-two workshops. Panorama Living Room presents jiggering, fettling, painting, glazing, firing and other production processes. Visitors are allowed to experience the magic of the ceramic industry. The west plaza is the contemporary art sector, planning domestic and foreign brand enterprises, academism, ceramics and artist studios. Well-known brands will be here to set up image stores. Young artists based academism, ceramic products over ceramic painting, ceramic sculpture, life pottery and others. Loft Studio tailored specifically for foreign artists, the first floor of which is an exhibition hall and the second of which can be for artistic creation. On the creative street, along the axis of the project, operating there are types of ceramic products, art derivatives and cultural creative products. Creative ceramic shops will also be held regularly at the Innovative Plaza to meet the pioneering needs of college students. The dining district in the southwest introduces various types of food and drink and leisure products with fashionable taste. Water bars and dessert shops are also evenly distributed along the landscape road and in the crowd gathering area, attracting a diversified customer base, creating a slow-life, leisure and business center. Taoshishan has the largest open-air car parking in the region and all-around pedestrian and vehicle dividing flow-line design. Introduces Caillou Manchu Hotel and establishes artists' apartments to perfect functional facilities. Taoshishan implements a uniform position, uniform planning, uniform marketing and uniform management, providing consumers with the nine-service-based whole-industry chain platform. When night falls, Taoshishan is immersed in fantastic splendor. Ceramics, music, a beautiful landscape and delicious food are all very brilliant. The musical fountain and light on the central plaza enhance each other's beauty and varies interesting performances that attract so many visitors. Taoshishan will be the city without night. Here, the integration of space and time, the coexistence of inheritance and creation interpret the truth of artistic life and the art of life. Taoshishan is not only the city living room of Jingdezhen, but the spiritual homeland of all ceramic lovers in the world. Let ceramics come home. Taoshishan welcomes you.
Thank you. Very good.
She didn't do the translation.
Oops. Okay, in addition now, as I said, that video was put together by them primarily as an introduction to this project. And as I said earlier, the reason that we wanted to go was to get a better feel for what they were actually doing there. We were sort of under the impression that this was like a shopping mall, like the Mall of America or something. It really wasn't that. It's an art center. And again, they're using this to develop a worldwide reputation for being a place that produces high-quality porcelain. Plus, you can come and appreciate it, the history of that industry. You can also learn to do it. They'll have these hands-on type of little studios, much like Door County, the hands-on thing up by Fish Creek, all the pottery places we have. So, what I want to do is just go through with a few slides that we took over there and kind of bring you up to date. I know it was hard for us to even understand exactly what was going on. So, as a board who has to approve this as a, as an ongoing project for the county, I think it would be a wonderful idea to maybe give you a little better oversight. Doesn't shake high, actually, but... Okay, let me go back already once here. This is the project. This is phase one. The, the area with the red roofs, the green space around there, I believe, will be additional phases, which will be primarily residential. But the size of this, I would say, the phase one there is probably about a 20-acre site. It's the, the site of a factory, again, that was built in 1950 that eventually went bankrupt. And so, now they're trying to add some resurgence and just reconstruct and add to that same site. If you're not familiar with exactly where this is, we weren't. This is the city of Jingdezhen. And this is about where that project is located within the city. So, it's right in the heart of the city. This is a view looking west. In that project, we also didn't understand from a standpoint of an investor, primarily this retail space that they would like to offer to Door County, just how much traffic this had. But this area down here is a main, main road. And then this area up here is also a main road. And then this, what they call a Central Art Avenue, goes right through the middle. And the Door County Square is right there. And the retail store, potential retail store is right there. So, we'll take a little closer look at that. Am I doing it, Jill? Okay. So, that's the, the area that we're calling the Door County Square. It did change a little bit from the original site plan. It's changed a little bit further. But we'll have a green space down here. This is where our lighthouse is going to be going. This will be a path through here. This will be green space. We're hoping to get a couple of cherry trees in there. And then our bay engineering was generous enough to help us with some three-dimensional drawings of a boat sculpture. So, we're going to be putting in a model, not a model, but a kind of an artist's concept of the framework of a, I think it's a 700-foot freighter boat there. This is the exterior of the square. They are starting to pave up here. Our square will start about here and it'll go around the corner. This is looking down. This is the retail space here that they would like to have somebody from Door County. And this is looking back to the west, or to the south, rather. And this will be all the, the green space that we just talked about. This is looking to the north at the retail space here. This is looking back to the south, the paved area. This is one building next to ours that'll be primarily restaurants and food. And then this is looking to the west again. And this is the Door County retail store there. This is that exterior space of that area. Again, this would be the Door County Retail Store. This would be the main entry, in a sense. This will, it's the corner of the building, but right here, we'll have an archway that will say Door County Sister City to Jingdezhen, China. They'll be fabricating that. We designed that and they'll be fabricating that shortly. Inside, the interior of the Door County Retail Space, they had that sign put up there for us. I'm assuming that's a hopeful prelude to somebody that might be willing to occupy the space. It's a nice space. This is one room. This, this wall can be taken out or a door put in there. And then it flows into this balcony area here. And that's a lower level. There's some space up there. You can see our group standing around that. There's enough room for probably a couple of shops in there if we wanted to be or could find an investor to, that would be interested in that. But it's a nice, a nice space. Lots of windows. It's a prime space. I'll show you that. This would be the south entrance to the project. That's Alyssa standing next to a retaining wall sign there that is promoting the Central Art Avenue. This is a main set of steps that comes off of that main street there. And there's a water feature. I don't know if you caught it in the video, but it runs the full length of this project, right down that main street. So, it'll end up down here, but it starts way in the other end, a series of little waterfalls and stream-like areas. And this, of course, is the Door County Square as viewed from the southeast. This is traveling through the project now. This is traveling through the project now beyond, and I guess I wanted to say, when you get to the top of those steps, the first thing you see is this Door County retail store and the Door County Square there. But if you travel further down, this is that exhibition hall, museum, the refurbishing, that 1950s porcelain production area, and they had quite a bit of work. I think when Tricia took her pictures last fall, that was just a skeleton of a building, so they've redone that. This is Kevin walking down the street there, this is that main avenue, and the Door County space is right on that. And then when you get to the, to the north end of the project, this is the, the entrance that's there now, I suspect that'll change and be opened up a bit, but that also opens up to a really busy street, a six-lane street there, so. This, we'll give you an idea then from the north, or I'm sorry, from the west, of what this project will look like. We're, again, we're situated right down over here, but this main road comes right through here, and this will all be phase one. They said when we were there that it would be done in June, I don't think so. If you can see the pictures and the piles of bricks there, but they do have a fall festival of ceramics held in Jingdezhen, and so I'm sure that they're going to want at least parts of this open by then, so. And then the last slide was just based on Suzie's discussions with Juan Jun, who is a Chinese, I guess what we call a national, who went to school at UW-Milwaukee.
Marquette.
And so, he's familiar with the area, he's from, he's been to Door County, and so he was partially responsible for the sister city arrangement and the interest. But he, he did lay out something for us because we had no idea how this, as an investment opportunity would work, so he gave us some information on that. So, that's the end of the slides.
Would you mind if I added one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
To this, this, I mean, I think this is just a beginning proposal. What we basically said to him is, all of their literature was in Chinese, and if we want to interest any Door County businessperson, they need to have a document in English that lets them know what are their risks, what are their benefits, how does it work? And so, this is kind of his first draft, which we will perhaps go back and forth on. I've also had a conversation with the Asia person at Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation who is willing to help us figure out whether this is going to be helpful to our businesspeople and how. And I have two links that I haven't pursued yet with, with DAT cap that have to do with grants for businesspeople who want to market internationally and some other things. So, what we're hoping is to just explore this process and see if there are businesspeople in the county who have products that they would like to sell there. They also talked about that part of that could be a coffee shop restaurant with Door County products, so we'll have to see where it goes. So, this is really not a carved-in-stone thing, this is his first draft, and we clearly need to go back and forth about some of this and get things spelled out.
Things over there work differently. They don't really own land over there, the government owns that, they provide it, the investor comes in, has to put in a certain amount of money, and then they somehow split the profits, and I'm not, I don't think any of us really understood exactly how that works. So, we were trying to get a better understanding, but hopefully what we felt our responsibility was to bring information back. I've got like 600 slides, so if anybody's interested in, in the project or that particular retail space, I've got many more slides that we'd be glad to show them, and they'd get a better understanding of what they're dealing with. Because up to this point, we really didn't have that, we didn't really know exactly what we had there, so. Any questions? Yes?
I noticed that the sign said Door County. Is there any place where it says Wisconsin?
Not there right now, no, no.
But in the, in the sign, Greg didn't show you the, the schematic for the square part because we saw it when Tricia presented, but there's the archway over, you know, over the entrance that will say Door County, Wisconsin, USA, Sister City to Jingdezhen. There's the, you want to describe the other features of that square?
Yeah, in addition, well, we did a little scale model drawing of the King Island Lighthouse, which they will be constructing, so that'll indicate Door County again. But then outside the main entrance to the Door County retail space, there will be an inlay into the sidewalk there, which is about 14 feet wide, if I'm reading the plans correctly, which will show the Great Lakes. We had discussions on this early on, and Bill Schuhr suggested that those people would really enjoy, it's like when we go to the west or the east coast, you've got to go down and put your foot in the ocean. Apparently, these people like to do that same thing to the Great Lakes, so that's one of the first things they want to do is see the Great Lakes. So, we featured those, but it'll show Wisconsin, and then Door County will be highlighted on there as well, so.
Interesting you said that about sticking your foot in the ocean because I went to Washington DC, I had to put my foot in a baton lake.
Is it all there yet? Any other questions?
I just wanted to add one thing, I think the PR that Door County got from this visit was tremendous, especially through Alyssa's reporting. When we came back, everybody said, "Oh, how was China?" You know, I wanted to know all the, the details about our trip, so I think the PR that the county has gotten out of this has been really super.
And hopefully that brought this whole project a little bit more to the forefront because it was relatively unknown, at least from my standpoint, I read a few things in the paper, but what Alyssa did really brought it to the forefront and I think had a better understanding of what we're trying to do there.
Okay, thank you very much. I was going to have Bill, Bill Schuster briefly reinform the county board, tell them about the relationship and its coming due and, real brief.
Sure, real brief. I always tell them brief. Our relationship, official agreement with the, with our friends in China expires at the end of this year. Bill Schuhr's assignment, as given by Dan, was to explore and try to enhance and grow this relationship and then come back to the county board and make a recommendation. Bill and I will be coming back to you late summer, early fall. While I have the, have the stage, just wanted to let the county board know that the Jingdezhen delegation is going to arrive in Chicago on July 13th, and they'll be in United States in Door County from the 13th to the 18th. We, we planned to have, we've been working with, with Dan and Suzie, we planned to, to have a quote-unquote county board meeting that afternoon of the 14th, and then you'll also be invited to a late afternoon or dinner with the Chinese on the 14th. One thing I've told everyone, and I stress it all the time, they, they have the greatest respect and put great emphasis on our leaders. They are excited about meeting the group of you. I mean, they, they always talk about bills and bills leaders, and they're talking about you and the city and such, and we plan to invite all them. Alright?
Thank you. And I, but to stress one thing, this all started three, four years ago now? More than? That basically it has been at, at this point, no cost to the county, it's all been funded by private people, nothing taxpayer dollars, basically.
All the trips, all the trips are funded by the people who go.
Exactly. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hit the switch. Susan. Okay, back to the agenda. It shouldn't take too long. New business, I have no number, oral committee reports, anybody want to give any? Oral committee report. Anybody have any comment on the minutes? Get your hungry. Any questions on the vouchers and claims and bills? Next meeting is June 23rd at 9:00 AM, and the WCA conference is September 20th to 22nd. If you haven't, you've got to turn in a little piece of paper to Jill about the shirts. If you haven't done that, make sure you get it to her. If not, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second, any second, John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Color shirts can be named.